Good evening. I'd like to bring this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. And the first item will be a public hearing on a zone change to establish a historic special area zone for the Brunner Schmitz House located at 1410 River Road. We will also probably, possibly deliberate and take action tonight to make a recommendation to the City Council. And at this time, I'd like to let everybody know it's time to please silence all electronic devices. Thanks. Those around the table as well. And we'll start off with introductions. I'm Heidi Byerly, the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Rick Duncan. Bill Randall.
Gabe Flock.
Steve Oakes.
Steve Nystrom.
Lisa Warnes.
I'm Randy Lettich.
Jeff Mills.
Thanks. Before I begin the hearing, I'd like to briefly go over the hearing procedure. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the special area zone change before us. Your testimony should be directed toward the relevant criteria for establishing a special area zone at EC 9.3020. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to staff. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: applicant and those in support of the proposed zone change, those in a neutral position, and those opposed. At the end of the testimony, we'll ask for any staff response, and then applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal if necessary. And so, Steve, do you have introductory material?
Yes.
That is Steve Oakes, City Staff. And so, the first agenda item today is a public hearing on a proposed zone change to establish a historic special area zone for the Brunner Schmitz House at 1410 River Road. The special area zone, to be applied to a lot containing a specific building, can ensure that the permitted use encourages preservation of the historic qualities. And so, in this case, the applicant submitted a draft ordinance to us. We then worked with the applicant to refine the ordinance, and so if adopted, the historic special area zone will be implemented as an uncodified ordinance specific to this property. And the Brunner Schmitz House was approved as a city of Eugene historic landmark in December of this last year. It's currently zoned R2 medium density and is also designated for medium density in the Metro Plan and River Road Refinement Plan. The portion of the property included in the request was also separated from a larger 7.7 acre parcel in 2008 that is also zoned R2 and is currently vacant. And if you look on page seven of the Planning Commission agendas where the, I guess, the draft ordinance begins and sets out specific uses that if adopted would be applicable to this property only. So unless there are any questions, that concludes staff's opening remarks.
Questions from commissioners? Okay. I'll now open the public hearing with applicant and those in support of the application. If you want to, please come forward and give your name and address when you speak.
Hi. My name is Michael Howard.
If you'd feel free to sit down.
That's okay. Thanks. 2855 Mill Street, Eugene, Oregon. I'm the applicant's representative, and I just want to say that we are in support of staff's recommendation, and we're here to answer any questions that you guys might have. Thank you.
Is anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody neutral or opposed? I don't have any other seats. No? Okay. Does staff have any response?
Are there any questions in regards to this? No, then we don't have any.
Okay.
I just moved that we closed the public meeting.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Let's see here. Commissioners have any other questions we can deliberate now? If you feel up to it?
Yeah.
Recommended?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have anything now? What is your?
I guess I'll just jump in quickly and say that I was on the historic review board when the application was reviewed and recommended by the historic, by that group, and was well presented. The house is a very good example. I think they've got a good plan for how to preserve it. So I was, I voted in favor, and I think it's a good, a very good property.
I just had a question on the diagram on here. The garage was left out of?
Yes.
Whoever, what was the purpose of leaving the garage out of the?
So, as I understand it, the garage was not built with a foundation, and that's part of the issue. It's also located on the parcel that was partitioned off and intended, as I understand it, for future development.
Okay. So this was already partitioned prior to this application?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I read recently in some planning literature that historic preservation and gentrification can interfere with redevelopment in areas, timing redevelopment, and so forth. And, you know, we're looking at high density, higher density, compact urban growth. So when I first read this and saw that it was zoned R2, I thought, how are we reconciling that? And I'm real pleased, Steve, that, I guess, starting on about page 28 of the agenda packet and carrying on through page 30, you addressed two recommendations that didn't need to be addressed that specifically speak to the R2 zoning that's remaining on the, on the other seven acres, and the fact that that won't have a major conflict with our efforts at higher density development in the area. Because, you know, that, I think this is part of the Razor Park area as well, and our effort to see some mixed use development in that area. So I'm real pleased that it was addressed as part of the packet and substantiates what we're doing here. Thanks.
Lisa?
So just to be clear, the garage isn't part of the historic preservation?
Correct.
Any other questions, statements from commissioners? Yes.
I have a motion. Are you ready for one?
Okay.
I move to accept the application as submitted by staff. Second. Oh, was I supposed to read one?
I think that's probably sufficient, or do you need that exact verbiage?
Just to clarify, that you'll be making a recommendation to approve the draft ordinance to City Council?
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Congratulations. The second item for tonight's agenda will be a public hearing on an appeal of the hearings official's decision to approve a Willamette Greenway permit application for transportation improvements in the Willamette Greenway. Before I begin the hearing, I would like to briefly go over the hearing procedure. This decision of the Planning Commission on this appeal is quasi-judicial, so we will use the quasi-judicial format for this public hearing in accordance with applicable code requirements. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the appeal before us. We will not be making a decision on the appeal tonight. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed toward the appeal issues and relevant criteria. No new evidence pertaining to appeal issues can be accepted by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission can only accept argument and analysis related to the evidence that is already in the record. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to staff. A little green sheet. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the applicant, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the applicant or in support of the appeal. At the end of the testimony, we'll ask for any staff response, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. I'm also supposed to remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and parties to respond will preclude further appeal on that issue. Before we begin, the Eugene Code 9.7065 requires that planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or biases, abstentions, or challenges to impartiality. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Now, staff will provide a brief introduction before we begin testimony.
Okay. Now, also, I'll bring these up. The first packet is for the applicant, and then the, only the first two are actually going to speak, but the rest, fill them out in case there's questions. And then this one's from against.
Thank you.
Okay. So the second hearing is in regards to an appeal of the Eugene hearings official February 24th, conditional approval of Willamette Greenway permit, WG 10-3. This Willamette Greenway permit was for transportation's improvements, including a new bridge associated with a widening of Good pasture Island Road and widening of interchange approaches that came out of a previous land use decision, a group of land use decisions with tentative PUD 09-1, Good pasture Island, which I'm guessing you guys all remember also. And so, this improvement was a condition of approval that came out of that land use decision. The improvements are offsite of the development and are at the Good pasture Island Delta Highway interchange, and the, there, I don't know if you have your packets in front of you, but there's a, kind of an aerial context map that was, it's actually in page 780 of the packet, but I can kind of hold it up and show you here. So here is the tentative PUD or the development site that they, the initial land use application was for, and then up here is the, where the Willamette Greenway permit application is for. So it's, if your Valley River Center would be down here, and then you'd take Good pasture Island up and around, and then you'd come out on the Good pasture there, so. And the proposed improvements are completely within the greenway and also completely within the public right-of-way. And the appeal, this appeal is based on the record, so no new evidence, and there were 12 appeal issues that are addressed in the AIS, starting on page 52 of the agenda packet. And then I also made extra copies of the hearings official decision because we do reference that a lot. If you don't have a copy handy, I have extra copies here, so. And in the AIS, staff concluded that the hearings official was not in error or inconsistent with EC 9.8815, which is the Willamette Greenway approval criteria. And if there, unless there's any further questions, that concludes staff's initial presentation.
Commissioners have any questions? I'll now open the public hearing with the applicant and those in support of the applicant. So when you come up, please give your name and address for the record.
Hello. I'm Don Silber with My Group Architects at 808 Southwest Third Avenue, S500 Portland, Oregon 97205. I did bring some exhibits, which are the same exhibits that were presented at the initial hearing, where the hearings official made his approval, and also are reflected in the record, but they're here for references. I kind of just give an overview of the project initially, and then I'll introduce some of the other folks that are here and what their roles are and how they can respond to questions, et cetera. So I'm going to step away from the microphone just a second, put those up. All right. So just as an overview, as Steve had mentioned, this is one of a series of applications that have been made relative to the development of a piece of property on Good pasture Island, which are related to this project. So this is one of the conditions of approval that came out of the initial zone change and tentative planning unit development applications, which were approved. And this is the offsite transportation, traffic improvements at the intersection of Good pasture Island Road and the Delta Highway. So from those conditions of approval came some requirements through our traffic impact analysis and related to the zone change and development on that particular piece. In general, those improvements consist of widening the roadway at the overpass of Delta Highway for Good pasture Island Road to provide for a dual left-hand turning motion from eastbound Good pasture Island Road onto northbound Delta Highway. And, you know, the basis for those improvements is detailed in that traffic impact analysis, which you all reviewed at the appeal proceeding for that tentative planning unit development application. So that's the primary thing that's taking place. Also, the widening of that on-ramp to allow for the two lanes of traffic to get onto the on-ramp, merge down into one, and then actually get onto the Delta Highway. And then, on the western side of the intersection, the change of the traffic motion at the intersection of the southbound Delta Highway off-ramp at Good pasture Island Road to allow for, well, I guess, to facilitate the turning movement of traffic there. So this, this image we're looking at is an aerial photograph that has been amended to give a sense of what, what this means. So we're placing a secondary bridge structure adjacent to the existing bridge structure to carry the westbound traffic on Good pasture Island Road, so that the existing overpass can handle the eastbound through traffic as well as the lanes of traffic turning left to get onto northbound Delta Highway. So that's the general aerial overview. The next thing I'll show you is a slightly more detailed technical drawing of where the improvements actually are related to the existing. So on this exhibit, Exhibit GP1, you can see there's a kind of a gray tone that shows where the roadway, actual travel surfaces are expanded to provide for this widened traffic. And so, the other thing, a couple of other things you can see here. As Steve noted, this site is located entirely within the Willamette River Greenway boundary, and it also is entirely within either county-owned ownership right-of-way or city-managed right-of-way for the Good pasture Island Road overpass. The heavy lines you can see with the, kind of the dashes and dots, indicate some of the sensitive lands that are adjacent to this intersection. So to the west of the intersection, there are wetlands. To the east, the northeast and the southeast of the intersection, there are wetlands. On the southeast and on the west, the resources are classified as Category A and have 50-foot non-conservation setbacks. And on the northeast, they're classified as Category B and have 25-foot setbacks. And so, what you'll see on this image are the adopted GO5 boundaries, which the city has in its database of GIS information, that we have taken and placed into our technical drawings to locate the boundaries of those specific features related to the approval criteria and the necessity to provide a boundary to evaluate whether or not the conservation setbacks are impeded upon in proposed development.
Would you be kind enough just to point out what the wetland boundaries are?
Yes. Yeah.
So here at the northeast, this is the boundary. At the southwest, there's a boundary, and on the western side, there's a boundary.
Thanks. Now, a point of clarification is, oh, yes.
If I could while you were there, that lower left hand, excuse me, lower right-hand wetland, when I looked at the small map I had, it would appear that it actually has the road going over it?
No. What it has is the right-of-way going over it.
Okay. So the actual travel lane is here, and the right-of-way is here. So. Yes. That's the right of way. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. As a point of distinction that's been raised in the appeal statement and that we addressed very specifically in our application, there's a distinction in the EC regarding what boundary an applicant can use related to this conservation setback determination. And so, the, the code provides for either the GO5 resource boundaries, which have been adopted by the city, or if provided by the applicant, a wetland delineation that's been concurred with by the Oregon Department of State lands. In our instance, we actually went with the adopted boundaries, and our application is based on those boundaries, even though we have performed a delineation which shows a different location for those wetlands. At the time the application was made, that had not actually been concurred with by DSL, and so we proceeded forward with the existing adopted GO5 boundary. So next, I'm going to show just a, a couple of things that are a little bit more detailed, specifically related to that topic, these boundaries, and then give just a quick introduction to the folks that are here, and then I'll ask Mike Robinson to come up and speak a little as well.
Steve, Gabe, I've got a question if, bear with me if it's off, not in part of the record right now, but I'm curious if the delineated wetlands, how they match up to the GO5 lines?
I think he should, I think it may have been shown upon the last map.
Yeah. I'll show you, I'll show you in this map as well as another one, so.
Actually, we're that, a little more that direction.
How do you touch it?
Now, can you guys see? Or no?
So this is a zoomed-in close-up of that, the eastern side of the interchange and focusing primarily on the northeastern quadrant there. And so, you can see there's a repeat of that GO5 boundary and the same type of heavy line and dash, and double dot. So I'll point that to you right now.
Could you give me the reference to that map, please?
GP2, from our application. And you can see that it's some dimension away from both the existing roadway and our So closer to the interchange and closer to the existing roadway and our improvements is the delineated boundary that, that we performed. I'll point that out now.
That's down here, and is shown in a little bit larger detail up here as well.
So now, we're looking at Exhibit GP4, which is similar, but it has a little bit different information. So what this shows are the extents of the improvements, again, in that dark gray, and also have a reference for a cross-section that we've provided specifically at this location where the improvements are close to these existing wetlands. So these are the improvements, and then this is an indication of a section cut at this point adjacent to the actual wetland boundary and some distance away from the And this image, GP6, is that cross-section that shows our, our intent for, oh, it's movable.
This would work better than that. There it goes.
So as you can see, this is intended to show our method for retaining the soil associated with the improvements and the difference in grade relative to the existing slope for the existing roadway and our proposed improvements. So this is just informational, to show you what it is we're proposing, what we've been talking about, and what it is that the hearings official reviewed and approved.
The dashed line over there is the delineated wetlands?
That's correct. And the, the adopted GO5 boundary is, is further away. So that's a basic overview of the proposal and the overall application. We have representatives from the civil engineering firm, structural firm, geotechnical engineering firm, and ecological firm that did the investigation on the site. Obviously, myself as the applicant's representative, and then Mike Robinson, our land use attorney, who's going to talk a little bit specifically about the appeal issues that have been raised.
Did I get it right? Okay. Thank you. Members of the commission, my name is Michael Robinson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I hope this is our last trip to the Planning Commission. We've been working on this for a while. Let me tell you, first of all, that we agree with the hearings officer recommendation, decision, and the conditions of approval, and we agree with the staff report to this body regarding this appeal. We'd asked the Planning Commission, when you deliberate, to reject the appeal and affirm the hearings officer's decision. What I wanted to do in a small amount of time is just walk through the 12 appeal issues, and I think they're well-covered in both the hearings officer's decision, his decision is extremely comprehensive, and the staff report. And then we gave you a letter today that you'll have time to read in your leisure prior to deliberation explaining our response to the appeal issues. But let me start with two things. You're going to hear two important concepts as you read the documents and as you listen to the hearing tonight. First is the phrase "along the river." Standards that are relevant to this application apply to sites, well, let me back up. Standards are in, are a couple, couple different kinds of standards in your code. There are those that say "along the river," and there are those that don't have that phrase. The hearings officer correctly determined those standards that use the phrase "along the river" means the current Willamette River channel, not the former channel, not the area away from the river, but the area along the river. "Along" means adjacent or next to, and in one of our letters to the hearings officer that's part of your record, we actually provided a decision from the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals that describes what "along" means. It's what you think it would mean. It's next to, it's adjacent to. The Planning Commission should conclude, as the hearings officer did, the Willamette River and those standards using the phrase "along the river" means by that current main channel. It's not this site, it's not away from the channel. And that's a distinction in the applicable, in the approval criteria. Some apply only to sites along the river, others apply to sites within the Willamette River Greenway boundary, which we're in, but we're not along the river. The second concept you're going to read about and hear about is the Willamette River Greenway boundary and the 35-foot setback from the Willamette River Greenway. The site's within the boundary, but it's not within the setback. That 35-foot setback runs from the high water mark of the river. We're well outside of that setback. We're in the boundary, but not within the setback. And in fact, this Planning Commission about 11 years ago made that very decision in the East Bank Trail case in 1999. The citation of that case is in the record, the portion of the Planning Commission decision making that point is in the record. So we all agree, we're within the boundary, but that doesn't mean every Willamette River Greenway policy applies to us. And the hearings officer was very precise in explaining which policies applied to this site and which didn't. So keep those two concepts in mind. Not every policy applies to this application because we're not along the river, and not every policy applies to us because we're not within that 35-foot setback. By the way, that East Bank Trail file number is City of Eugene file number WG 98-1, and that's in your record. So let me walk through the 12 appeal issues. I didn't have Mr. McKee's letter that he's given you tonight or will give you when I address these. I simply had the very perfunctory appeal that he filed, but I think that's good enough to walk through the issues. First of all, the hearings officer didn't hold that the approval criteria applying at the Willamette River Greenway weren't applicable to this application. What he did is what I just described. He looked at the, at the policies and correctly concluded that those that said "along the river" didn't have anything to do with the site, that those that had to do with the 35-foot setback didn't have anything to do with the site. And that's absolutely the right decision on the part of the hearings officer, and it's consistent with the decision that this body made in 1999 in the East Bank Trail case. Secondly, an exception to statewide planning goal 15 is not required. Normally, in a permit application like this, the goals don't apply anyway, but if we weren't compliant with some aspect of your implementation of that goal, we'd have to take an exception. You only have to take an exception to the goal to allow fill when you're within that 35-foot setback. We're not within 35-foot. We're not within the 35-foot setback, therefore that exception isn't required. The third appeal issue is the idea that we went out and had to obtain consents from the City of Eugene and Lane County because we're working on property that's in some instances owned by the city and in some instances owned by the county. The opponent argues that, well, we need to look behind that and determine, did they really have title? Now, I think the hearings officer got this right. There's simply, first, there's two points to remember. First of all, I think you, as with a private property owner, you don't ask for a title report. You don't go back in the chain of title and determine whether that property owner, that private property owner, had the right to submit the application. And I think the same thing is true here. We went to appropriate city and county officials, we obtained their consent on a form to submit, to process this application, and we turned into the hearings officer a fair amount of information explaining not only why the city and county needed to give those consents, but also why those officials had the authority to sign the consents on behalf of the respective governmental entities. That's far more than, in fact, the planning commissioner and the hearings officer would receive in a regular application, and if you look through the record, I think it's more than sufficient to support what the hearings officer decided, that in fact, the requisite consents have been obtained and they were appropriate. Fourth appeal issue is whether this application is inconsistent with the transportation system plan, which is transplan. This is an existing bridge, we're adding lanes and addressing the throats of the bridge. The bridge isn't required to be in transplan, and I think the hearings officer did a good job of explaining why that isn't the case. Fifth appeal issue is the assertion that this property is zoned, parks, and open space. Remember that this is a right-of-way, and your code expressly says that right-of-way is unzoned, so there is no zoning issue on right-of-way. Sixth issue, the application doesn't require filling in violation of Eugene Code 9.4900. Hearings officer, I think, did a very good job of explaining how that criterion works and how we satisfy that. If you have questions, we can come back to it, but I'd really refer you to his decision because I think it does a good job of explaining how that criterion works. EC 9.8815 sub 1 is the seventh appeal issue. It's not applicable because it applies to the river, we're not along the river. Same issue with EC 9.68352, that's inapplicable. It only applies to areas along the river, and again, we're not along the river. The appellant argued that we didn't satisfy Metro Plan Policy D5. That's inapplicable because this permit is compatible with the natural scenic and environmental qualities of the waterways, the ponds, and it simply expands an existing facility within existing right-of-way. So again, if you look at the hearings officer's decision, he did a pretty good job of explaining how that works. The 10th appeal issue was Willackensie Area Plan Standard 2. It's inapplicable. It applies along the river. Embedded in that 10th appeal issue is Willackensie Area Plan Standard 4. That's satisfied. That has to do with the retaining wall, and that's simply not prohibited by that policy. The 11th appeal issue, somehow where in this I've combined two of the issues, but I think we've covered them all, is Eugene Code 9.6710. That's the geotech study requirement. The hearings officer looked at the evidence that we had submitted to satisfy that requirement and found that indeed we had satisfied it. So I apologize for the brevity of this. You've got a lot of written materials, however, and I thought, given the fact that you're not going to deliberate, I could hit the high points rather than taking a long time to elaborate. The bottom line is, the hearings officer did a very good job in looking at the evidence, weighing the evidence, and finding that we'd met the approval criteria. We're comfortable with the conditions of approval that he imposed. We believe they're both feasible and warranted, and so we were very comfortable with the decision. With that, if you have any questions either now or before you close the record, please give us a chance to answer them, not only of me or Don, but of our other consultants who are here. We're happy to do that. If not, as I said at the beginning, we'd ask you to affirm the hearings officer's decision and reject the appeal, and we thank you for your time tonight.
A question, if you could. I only get a chance to sort of quickly run through your letter, and I may have missed the reference, but under page 5 of your letter, Appeal Issue 4.
Mr. Duncan, can I grab my letter?
Sure, you bet.
Sorry, would you repeat which page, please?
On page 5, under Appeal Issue 4, just a question, there's three or four pages of italic print. Was that some other document?
That's, thank you, Commissioner, we should have said that. That was from one of our letters that we had submitted, and so we thought we would just repeat it verbatim. This has to do with the consent issue, and that letter, that language is in the record because it was in a letter to the hearings officer.
To the hearings officer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ren?
At some point in time, I would like either Steve or the applicant to explain to me this distinction between the GO5 boundary line and the delineated boundary line, and I need some help understanding what's going on there.
Would you like to give it a shot, or?
I'd prefer to hear your take on it.
Okay. So I'll start with kind of how the application occurred, and then I'll move on to, I guess, what the hearings official saw and then what we added to that. So when Goodpastor submitted their Willamette Greenway, initially they came in with a wetland delineation and a standard review and a Willamette Greenway permit. Their wetland delineation had not been concurred with at that point yet. We went through the completeness--
State.
Correct, correct. We went through the completeness review process, and in the meantime, I think they had heard from the state of how long it was going to take to get concurrence. So they subsequently withdrew their standard review and went to the GO5 mapped boundary, which is, there is a difference, and they were, it clearly showed, when they were showing the delineated wetland, that it was in the setback, so that, therefore, they had the standard review in there. And in fact, they left the standard review, some of the, I guess, the criteria in their Willamette Greenway application, just to show that they were still meeting the intent of it, but they weren't, because they didn't have an application and weren't within the setback. In fact, they asked us if they could apply for one, you know, or keep one in if it wasn't in the setback, and we didn't really have the, it only applies if you're working within whatever setback you're applying to it, so we said no. I don't know if that makes sense as far as how that part went.
Following the old case so far.
Okay. Then subsequently, the hearings official also, there was, or there was a, the Alder Woods decision was also submitted into the record at some point in that, and then, so subsequently, even after the hearings official said they're without, they're outside the setback, we took it another step to try to show how it was different from the Alder Woods situation, that you couldn't apply the same determination, or how you determine the setback was different because it was a wetland and not a riparian area. And so that's why we added that, I guess, that distinction in further on, which basically said that because in a case of a wetland, it clearly states either, use either the map or, if provided, interestingly enough, even if it says "by the property owner," that you can then use a, the DSL concurred with wetland. So that's--
Just from the quick glance of the map, it appears that the delineated, the delineated line is broader than the GO5 line.
By quite a bit.
Yeah. And is that delineated line impacted by the road improvements?
The delineated line is not, but there would have, if you went with the delineated line, the road improvement would be within a setback if it was taken from the delineated line.
In which case, that would require a standards review application and approval, which arguably is allowed. I mean, they're able to request that as a public improvement within the setback, but based on what Steve described, they've withdrawn that application. I think it comes down to a simple read of the code, and then it's optional. And while the code may create a problem, you know, in the instance where the two boundaries don't match, clearly they have the option, it's an or statement, and they chose the adopted maps--
GO5.
--and went with it.
Okay. I think I'm okay.
And Chair Byerly, if I may, Commissioner, is it, how do I pronounce your name? I'm sorry. Let it, thank you very much. If you have additional questions, please ask us in rebuttal before the record closes tonight, and we're happy to try and answer them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we need to have people enter their names beyond this?
I think after the first two, the others are just available for questions on the applicant's side.
Okay. I do have Greta Murdaugh wishing to speak.
Chair Byerly, the applicant, I think we've done our presentation. If you have questions of our consultant, we're happy to answer them. We just wanted to give you their names and addresses for purposes if they came up and touched upon it.
Okay.
We don't have any more talk coming right now.
Okay, so Greta is part of your--
Yes, yeah, she's the ecologist for the project.
I think Mr. Mitke is the only other--
Only other person--
Request to speak for him, then he's against.
Okay. Quite a stack, great. Thanks. Okay, so we don't have anybody who's neutral up here, so Zach.
Thank you, Chair Byerly. Commissioners?
Before I get started, I do have a written statement to introduce him to the record, and I'll distribute this to staff, and you can distribute it as you feel appropriate.
I don't think I've ever seen a letter that big before.
I'm sure you have.
Well, a packet is a packet, a letter is a letter.
First time for everything.
Can you do a little trifold on this, in an envelope?
I'm Zach Mitke, and I represent the appellant, Willamette Oaks LLC, in the appeal of the proposed Willamette River Greenway permit application, WG10-3. As we've outlined in our appeal statement, and as you have greater detail there in our written submission, there are a number of problems with the proposed Willamette River Greenway application, and I'm going to try and move through them as quickly as reasonable given that you have our written materials to look through, but if there are any questions, please don't hesitate to raise your hand or let me know. I'm going to take them a little bit out of sequence, just because I think this ownership issue is a very important one, and it's one that was given short shrift by the applicant. Just to put, not to put too fine a point on it here, the applicant has, is not the property owner in this case. The City of Eugene's code specifically provides that an application for Willamette River Greenway permit requires the signature of the property owner, and that simply did not occur in this case. The applicant is not the property owner in this case. Since it is not the property owner, it cannot apply for the Greenway permit for property, for public property, which it doesn't own. And the applicant's trying to sidestep this issue by pointing to some authorizations it has had prepared, signed by employees of the City of Eugene and also of Lane County. However, the authorizations are not adequate. Local government authority is vested in the governing bodies of the City of Eugene and Lane County, and the employees require actual authority from these governing bodies in order to act on behalf of the local government. These employees did not have it. Accordingly, the authorizations are not sufficient to authorize the applicant to seek the proposed permit. This is especially true in light of the fact that the applicant is a private entity to which no delegation of a local government's discretionary authority can be made in any case. Local governments can delegate their authorities to individuals within the local government itself, but when it comes to questions of discretionary authority, like filing a land use application, that discretionary authority can't be delegated to outside private individuals. The applicant argues that the delegations are sufficient because ORS 368.046 authorizes the county to employ a county road official to work under the county governing body in performing specified tasks, such as preparing specifications for road improvements, superintending work upon the roads of the county, and recommending methods of construction. However, the authorizing, however, authorizing private applicants to seek land use approvals within the public way is not an enumerated task, nor is it one that has been assigned to the road official. The applicant also points to Lane Code Section 15.200. However, this is merely an introductory provision in the county's road and right-of-way regulations. These provisions may provide the authority to issue facility permits in specified circumstances, but this case isn't about a facility permit. In fact, the lane manual expressly specifies both a citizen involvement process and board action for road improvement projects. That's Lane Manual 15.575 to 15.580, which has not been followed in this case. The applicant also contends that the city's authorizations were proper based on EC 7.140. However, again, these are ministerial construction permits and not authorizations for the city engineer to take any action to authorize a private applicant to apply on behalf of the city for transportation improvements. The applicant points to a 1946 case, Morris versus City of Salem, argue that the authorization is a valid exercise of the city's police power. However, in Morris, the city council actually adopted an ordinance creating a parking meter area and providing for the installation and operation of parking meters. Pursuant to that enacted ordinance, the council had adopted an authorization for the mayor and recorder to contract for the installation of the parking meters. Our case does not involve a formal authorization from the city council, and Morris is distinguishable on that basis. Moreover, the land use permit application in this case is not merely a ministerial act like installing parking meters. It requires a substantial exercise of discretion, particularly as there is no planning to support it. Accordingly, it cannot be delegated to a private citizen. Turning to the substance of the Greenway permit criteria, one of the, sort of, the interesting things that I think I heard the applicant's representative say is that the hearings official didn't find that various Greenway permit criteria were not applicable, and then he moved on to say that various Greenway permit criteria were not applicable, based on their location relative to what he is defining as the river. However, the city designates both the middle Willamette reach of the river and the Debric Slough Delta Ponds reach of the river as channels of the river protected by the Willamette River Greenway. And if you turn to page 2 in your packet, you'll see the Willackensie Area Plan designation there, which follows both reaches of the river, and actually loops around Goodpastor Island Road, making it an island in fact, and meets up somewhere north of the Delta Belt Line If the city had intended the Greenway protections to apply to only that portion of the river included in the middle Willamette reach of the river, it would not have included both reaches of the river within the Greenway boundary. The hearings official points to another part of the Willackensie Area Plan, which identifies some river crossings to indicate that the river does not include the Debric Slough Delta Ponds reach, but does not address the fact that the Willackensie Area Plan specifically identifies this area for protection. The applicant suggests that these criteria have been addressed by the hearings official, but the hearings official's repeated refrain throughout the decision is that the application is too far from the river for the criteria to be applicable. It's simply not the case here. Policy D11 of the city's metro plan does require a GO5 exception before this Greenway permit can be approved. D11 says, "The taking of an exception shall be required if a non-water-dependent transportation facility requires placing, the placing of fill within the Willamette River Greenway setback." This is undisputedly a non-water-dependent transportation facility. The hearings official, again, misinterprets this to apply to only one of the two river channels which are actually identified in the Willackensie Area Plan. I'm sorry, was there--
Yeah, Mr. Mitke, you're referring to page 2 of your letter?
I am.
And you're indicating that the city has designated the Debric Slough as what?
As a channel of the Willamette River. If you look, the gray area on there represents the Willamette River Greenway boundaries.
Right.
Those boundaries are established relative to the location of the river and river channels. Now, if you look at Goodpastor Island, which is the center portion right there, that right there, that's--
there, that's correct, that area has the middle Willamette reach, which runs along the western edge.
This?
Yep. But it also includes the Debric Slough Delta Ponds reach, which is there. That's correct. That's a determination that was actually initially made, I believe, by the Oregon Highway Department when it was laying out the Willamette River Greenway boundaries in this area, but was, has been subsequently formally adopted into the Willackensie Area Plan.
Thanks.
Again, the Greenway protects both channels. The proposal involves the placement of a non-water-dependent transportation facility, and therefore, the metro plan requires it to take a goal exception. The WR conservation overlay, which is set forth at EC 9.4900, prohibits filling, grading, construction, and removal of native vegetation within 25 feet of a goal five resource. The applicant proposes removal of native vegetation, including mature trees, grading, filling, and the construction of retaining wall within 10 feet of the wetland. The applicant, again, attempts to avoid the goal five protections by arguing that even though a formal wetland delineation concurred in with DSL identifies the wetland boundary, it can rely on a purported goal five boundary in the GIS to locate wetland boundaries further back than where they actually exist. One substantial problem is, however, that the GIS is unofficial and not the adopted goal five boundary. The second is that the boundaries of the city's adopted goal five map are only, and I quote from the Elderwood PUD case, "generalized delineations," and are at such a scale that the city has specified that site-specific information will be used to delineate a site on the ground. Not to put too fine a point on it, the goal five boundaries actually adopted by the City of Eugene are on maps that are of such a scale that a ordinary drafting pencil creates a line that's roughly 52 feet across. As a result, the city has said, well, if you want, if something is, you know, not clearly, I mean, far removed from a site, then one needs to look at site-specific delineations. And fortunately, we have one. We have the applicant's site-specific delineation, and one that was concurred in by the Division of State Lands, which establishes where the wetland boundaries are. They're simply ignoring those. They're not identifying where those, where their improvements are relative to those delineated boundaries, or they're trying to avoid addressing the prohibitions on development, filling, grading, removal of native vegetation within that area. This runs contrary to the, this Planning Commission's prior precedent on these issues, and also frankly, contrary to common sense. I mean, we know where the wetlands are. The conservation setback is easily enough measured from where the wetland boundary is. Therefore, that is the conservation setback that should be applied in this case. The applicant is, or the application is inconsistent with the transplan. I'm not going to get into this in too great a detail. What I will say is this is primarily an issue of preservation. An issue has been raised, it has been considered by the Land Use Board of Appeals. There's currently an application, or an appeal pending before the Oregon Court of Appeals on this very issue. Turning to the actual designation of the property in the city's metro plan and also in the Willackensie Area Plan, the property is actually developed, or is designated as parks and open space in both plans. This designation is applied, according to the metro plan, to publicly own metropolitan and regional-scale parks. The applicant has not demonstrated how its proposed use of this property for its proposed transportation improvements is consistent with this designation in the comprehensive plan as a park. Moreover, goal 15 provides that open space is required to be zoned in open space zoning. The applicant has not demonstrated that its, that its proposed activities are permitted activities in the city's parks, recreation, and open space zone. The applicant asserts generally that the property is not zoned owing to a provision, let me see if I can get this right, EC 9.1070. However, that provision only applies where there's an uncertainty as to the boundary of a zone or overlay zone, which has not been demonstrated to be the case. Turning to EC 9.8815, which requires the maximum possible landscaped area, open space, or vegetation between a proposed development and the river. Again, the hearings official has taken what we would say is a wrong turn in the question of where the river is located. The retaining wall is only 10 feet from the wetlands. It's not hardly the maximum, maximum possible landscaped area, open space, or vegetation, and does not even conform to minimum WR requirements. There's an interesting issue with regard to EC 9.8815-sub-two, which requires to the greatest possible degree, an applicant to provide necessary and adequate public access to and along the river. The applicant relies on the fact, or its assertion, that it will not hinder access to the river, somehow providing access to the river. That's clearly not adequate. As a matter of fact, there are planned facilities within this section of the Greenway that this proposal wouldn't link up with, and the purported connection of the new bridge does not actually provide a required pedestrian access because it doesn't connect to existing sidewalks.
Mr. Mitke, and help me if I'm getting off of the, what's in the record. Access to the river, are you suggesting, I think you refer to it as the west channel or the main channel, or Debric Slough? Which, is that significant in your...
Right, and I would say that, or we are referring to both. The one with regard to the Debric Slough, Delta Ponds reach of the river, as my understanding, that the city has planned facilities for pedestrian access within that area, which this doesn't provide any connection to, it doesn't facilitate access along that portion of the river. The applicant has indicated, well, we're providing better access to the main stem of the river because we're increasing mobility across this area so people can get to Good Pastor Island and can get to the East Bank Trail over there. The problem is that this doesn't provide any kind of pedestrian access. The applicant's proposal includes some sidewalks on the bridge itself, but it doesn't meet the city's minimum design standards, which says that you need to connect those to existing sidewalks in the vicinity. They literally come off the bridge, travel a short distance on Good Pastor Island Road, and then terminate at a ramp that leads to an undeveloped shoulder. Let's see here.
A question on that.
Certainly.
Which side of the bridge were you referring to?
I'm sorry?
Were you referring to the north side or the south side of the bridge right-of-way? Your comment was, it goes over the bridge and just terminates in the shoulder. Were you referring to...
If you're, it would be the northeast side of the bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Let's see here. We also speak to Policy D 5. There was some limited discussion of that by the applicant. Again, this is not, this provision is not limited solely to the middle Willamette reach of the river, which is what the hearings official held. As a matter of fact, it doesn't even refer to the river in that condition. The applicant seems to suggest, well, this proposal is as compatible with the natural, scenic, and environmental features of the river corridors or waterways in the area because there are already transportation improvements in the area, and the mere existence of these other transportation improvements in the area does not, we would submit, automatically render the construction of new transportation improvements automatically compatible with the surrounding waterways. This is especially the case where we know that the proposal destroys native vegetation. We know that the proposal is constructed contrary to the requirements of the WR overlay I'll touch briefly on the Willackensie Area Plan Standards 2, 4, and 7, which I've identified. There is, again, number two requires a provision of pedestrian and bicycle access along the river. Again, there's no, there is no connection of the proposed facilities to planned facilities in the area, and again, a ramp, literally a ramp to nowhere. Section four requires that opaque walls in excess of 75 feet be discouraged. The applicant's proposal includes an opaque wall, as acknowledged by its representative, in excess of 75 feet, that comes within 10 feet of the delineated wetland boundary. There's no attempt to discourage that. There's, just saying, simply saying, well, it says discourage, it doesn't mandate that we bar that, is not the same thing as discouraging it. There's been no, simply been no attempt, there's been no effort to push that wall And there's also the requirement in Standard 7 that significant fish and wildlife habitat be protected. The hearings official does a curious thing in relying on the WR overlay to do that job, while at the same time effectively ignoring the requirements of the WR protections and prohibitions, and basically saying, go forth and build within 10 feet of this protected wetland. I'll touch briefly on geotechnical issues, and then I'll ask if there are any outstanding questions. The geotechnical study provides only three boreholes in the area where the proposed bridge is, is purported to be located. Most of the boreholes are located south of the bridge where they're not proposing to construct anything. There is no characterization of the northwest bridge abutment fill. That's simply not the case. The applicant, applicant's engineer has represented previously that there was an attempt to bore into this northwest bridge abutment fill. If you look at the applicant's own materials, the borehole was entirely outside of this bridge abutment that they proposed to be constructing on. The applicant's engineer also misunderstands the geology of the area. He argues that a 10-million-year-old basalt layer is sandwiched between alluvial deposits which are only a few hundred years old. It's simply physically impossible. And it identifies a void in one of its drillings, one of the three in the relevant area, a void, an empty space, but does not address any likely causes for that void. Accordingly, we contend that the hearings official has erred repeatedly in approving this proposed Willamette River Greenway application. We would ask that the Planning Commission reverse the hearings official's decision. There are questions?
There don't appear to be any.
All right, thank you.
Okay, staff response?
Okay, yes, I was just going to touch on a couple of things and see if there's any questions. I wanted to touch quickly just on the location of the river again. So there's, Mr. Mitke, you know several times, call it the Debric Slough reach or the Delta Ponds reach. There's, looking in the refinement plan and in what was submitted in the record, we didn't see any evidence that there's a river channel there. It's always referred to either as the Delta Ponds, the Debric Slough. There's a past Willamette Greenway approval in the record also where they were doing the Delta Ponds restoration, and it also, in that decision, specifies between the location of the river and then the Delta Ponds and Debric Slough. So that's just in regards to that. I guess the location of the river comes up over and over again in this, in how the criteria looked at. And then the only other one was, again, the, the location of the WR, again, that the wetlands clearly, the code quotes that goal five locally significant wetland sites within the Eugene urban growth boundary map, or if provided by the property owner, a jurisdictional wetland boundary accepted by ODSL. And in this case, we were, the applicant went with the first option, so. Just wanted to know if there's any questions about any of the...
Yeah, Steve, in regard to the ownership issue...
Yes.
Has, just for the record, has the city attorney looked at that to determine who's authorized to sign off on this, on these applications?
The authorization from the city came through the city attorney's office, so I would say yes.
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay, okay.
And in the case of the, and in the case of the county, I don't know what, I'm assuming their legal looked at it also before they were authorized, the county personnel had signed off it, or the county personnel felt that they had the authority to, which was, in this case, Marsha Miller, I believe is who was one of the...
And county council enacting administrator at the time, I believe.
Okay. And then on the borehole issue, do you have any comment about the validity of the geotechnical report? Specifically, the comments Mr. Mitke made that there was an inadequate amount of boreholes drilled, and they were not in the location as would be appropriate?
Public Works staff review of the, of the geotechnical report, they got, they found to be sufficient initially, and then the hearing, and subsequently, there was further argument on both sides, but there was never, or staff never found a problem with their methodology from the, from the beginning.
So Public Works Department has accepted that?
Yes.
Yeah. So, well, if the boreholes weren't performed in the area of the develop, proposed development, then, I mean, that wouldn't be acceptable to me. I mean, I'm not, you know, arguing with Public Works, but it just, it just seems off.
Yeah, and we typically do, we just wrote, we rely on public staff, public works staff to, to, in both, through both completeness review and then through the process, to come up with any issues that they do, to point them out and have them corrected, and they...
Again, the hearings official's decision would have been based on both the code standards, which are really what needs to be met, in terms of methodology, what the report shows, and he also considered evidence on both sides, and in this case, obviously sided with the applicant's report.
The GeoScience did a, did a report too, which I haven't, I read, and it's the same one, a long time ago, but I'm wondering, did, he did not do any borings there, but what is that? Well, I'll look through that, and I'll bring questions to deliberation.
Rick?
A couple of questions. As I read through the Willamette Greenway permit, 9.001, and read some of the other information, it always refers to things like activities or improvements and so on, and I'm gathering, as we've written code over the last several years I've been here, we never, we always talk about development of structures and things like that. The bridge seems to be somewhat unique to me in this situation, and I don't see, and again, I haven't read all 1,400 pages yet, so excuse me if I missed it, but it, it seems like that the bridge really deals more with transportation, rightaways, and things like that. Is there, when we come to our code, our code usually deals with properties and structures and real property owned by people. How does a bridge fit in with that in, and I don't expect an answer tonight if you want to think about it, but it just seems to me that that really deals more with city-owned infrastructure, and we don't typically write code for our infrastructure.
Well, I think one important point to recognize here, and the hearings official touches on it, staff's touched on it a number of times in the record, is that right-of-way is unzoned. And so what we're looking at is a Willamette Greenway permit, and the criteria are arguably fairly narrow compared to what you may have seen in the past, say with a PUD, and how broad they may apply, and the way in which they apply. It's a, it's a focus on the relationship of the development to the river, more than it addresses a broad scope of all standards, so. it addresses a, a, a broad scope of all standards, so.
Other questions?
All right, do you have one more? Again, since I haven't been able to get through all of it yet, was there evidence in the record regarding the recent work that's been done along the Delta Ponds on the west side of Delta Highway? Where there's been a substantial amount of fill put along the road and all the plantings and everything? Is there anything in the record on that? If not, I won't ask any more questions.
The Willamette Greenway for the Delta Ponds restoration is in the record. I don't know if that covers those improvements.
I don't know for a fact, but I think it does. If you're referring to the west side adjacent to the ponds, west side of Delta Highway, I believe that's part of the, the restoration work.
But is that referred to in the records and what occurred during that, that filling process?
Based on my recollection, a copy of the decision in that, in that Willamette Greenway permit is in the record, but we'd have to confirm that to be sure.
Okay. Then I'll probably find it if it's there.
Any other questions? Applicant rebuttal?
So the letter is long, and we will be continuing our response, but I want to touch on a couple pieces, and then Mike Robinson will also have a few things to say. In, in addressing the geotechnical questions, just as a matter of fact, I believe it was possibly incorrectly stated that no borings were taken on the north side of the bridge. That's inaccurate. There, in fact, were three borings taken on the north side of the bridge, so just clear that up. Yes, we did investigate the north side of the bridge. And that's in the record. It's also elaborated on in additional information after the initial application was made, following the information submitted by our opponent during the course of the hearing, and has been addressed at length, actually. Yes.
Do you have a, in the record somewhere, borings map?
Yes.
Okay, and it's in the record already?
Yes, it is.
I'll go find it.
Also, Mr. Micky commented that regarding the goal five boundaries and the wetlands, that we, we were, I believe his words, were ignoring the existing boundaries, the factual boundaries, and making no mention of our adjacency to them. Well, if you look at the examples that I went through, initially, we are not ignoring them. We are in fact very clearly delineating where those are, and in the appendices of the original application are the, the standards review comments that we initially had responded to and pulled back the application of, but remained in the, the record to show that we are not ignoring. We are very conscientious of those, simply found ourselves in a procedural situation where we had to make a choice. Those are my comments for now. Mr. Robinson will come up, but if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
This, I think, is going to be sort of staff and possibly you. Has the area been marked, staked, or anything else for a, for a visual inspection of that? And if, if that is in the record, and then could we go do it, or if it's not in the record, or how would we handle those kinds of things?
So, yes, we, you know, through the delineation process, did field investigation, put flags and stakes as are appropriate based on, you know, the type of, of area. And then in the application, you'll actually see some of that information in the record. So you can visually go out there and look at it, and you also find it in the record of the application.
My question to staff is, since that much is in the record, are we allowed to go out and visually inspect the area? And again, you don't have to tell me now, you can ask the powers that be.
We'll check on it and get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Byerly, members of the commission, Michael Robinson, again, on behalf of the applicant. Let me start with the geotech analysis. This has been an area of a lot of dispute, but just as you have to do, the hearings officer had to weigh the evidence, decide what he had heard, and decide ultimately whether it complied with EC 96710. And let me just read you the paragraph at the bottom of page 15 of his decision. "Hearing's official is satisfied that the applicant's geotechnical analysis is complete. As noted above, city staff concurred with the assessment." You heard that from your staff tonight. "GeoScience presents a professional difference in opinion about how KNA engineering conducted the analyses, can alternative conclusions about some of the data, and disagreement, stark disagreement with conclusions about the data. The hearings official is not in a position to decide that one professional's methodology and interpretation of the geotechnical data is more correct or believable than the other. Here, KNA engineering has explained the basis of the methods and conclusions in response to the issues that GeoScience raised. Hearing's official concludes that the applicant's geotechnical analysis satisfies the EC." So our job is to give the decision maker, in the first instance, the hearings officer, the evidence demonstrating why we met those standards. He weighed it, he looked at it, and he concluded that we did. It's undoubtedly true, you could have professionals disagreeing on something as long as you want them to disagree on it, as long as you allow them to do that. But ultimately, one has to make a decision. Hearing's officer weighed the evidence and believed, found that we had satisfied our burden of proof on that standard. You may be able to, there may be other ways to do the geotechnical analysis, but that doesn't defeat the evidence that we put into the record, and it's certainly not a basis for this commission to reverse what the hearings officer did in this case. Goal five, I appreciate the commission's questions about that, and I was just looking at the hearings officer's decision. He says what the staff has said. He cites EC 94920 sub two, page 11 of his decision, which says you either use the goal five acknowledged boundary, or you provide a delineation. In this, in this occasion, we used the goal five acknowledged boundary. So let me go back over the points Mr. Micky made tonight. We're going to ask that the written record stay open for applicant only. This is our right under state law. For seven days, we'll submit final written argument only, and we will extend the clock by an additional seven days to account for that period of time. So before you conclude tonight, we would like you to grant our request to keep the written record open for applicant only to submit final written argument, and that would be due on the 12th of April at 5:00 PM to Mr. Oaks, and that's consistent with state law. I think one of the commissioners, and perhaps I don't remember which one, I apologize, made a, made a good point. This is about a transportation facility, so keep that in mind. This is not a pristine area. It is not along the river. It is a transportation facility that we are conditioned to improve. And I might note, Mr. Micky, someone asked, let me find that I know here. Bear with me just a minute. Mr. Micky raised, talked about the transplan issue and noted, well, that issue's on appeal. The reason it's on appeal is Lubbock rejected this precise argument already, so it's on appeal to the Court of Appeals. Transplan, this is an existing road, we're adding turn lanes to it. That was a condition of approval, and because of that, we have to get a Greenway permit. Issue's already been litigated, and Lubbock ruled against the opponents on that issue. He raised it, and that's why I'm responding to it tonight. So keep in mind, transportation area, and I think that's, that's a salient point to remember as you think about this. I also want to note, I appreciate Zach, as he's always done, giving me a copy of his letter, but it's pretty long. I reserve the right to review and object to any new evidence that I might find on it. I'll, I'll take Zach at his word that there's not, but like you, I want a chance to sit quietly and, and read it, so I'm going to do that. Ownership issue, nobody's delegated anything to a private property owner. What happened is, we asked the city and the county, and Zach and Gabe, or, I'm sorry, Steve and Gabe are correct, both the city attorney's office and the county council's office reviewed those consents. The record reflects that. Nothing was delegated to us. We simply had the permission to submit an application on their land. That's what your code requires, that's what we obtained. The signature of the property owner is in the record in the form of consents from the city and county. If you look at pages five through nine of my letter, that's the italicized portion of the letter that Commissioner Duncan asked about. We went through in great detail how we went about doing this. The reality is, what Mr. Micky's position is, is every time you need to ask local government to do something, you got to go to the city council or the board of county commissioners. That's not the way it works. Neither of those bodies have the time to do that, and that's not what either your code or the Lain County Code requires, and we explained that in our letter. The consents are signed by the appropriate officials, whom in turn are authorized to do that kind of thing by their respective legislative bodies. And I note that the Lain County Manual has to do with county road projects. This is not a county road project. This is an improvement to an existing public facility that we're allowed to apply for on public land. Mr. Micky said that the city designates the slough as the Willamette River. I don't agree with that. I don't think that's how you've operated in the past, and I don't think that's what the relevant documents say. It's certainly part of the Willamette River Greenway boundary, but it's not subject, it's not the river, and it's not along the river, and it's not subject to the 35-foot setback. It's within the boundary, but it's not 30, it's not within that 35-foot setback. And the map at page two doesn't give you any guidance on that. That simply shows the boundary. It doesn't tell you what Mr. Micky says it tells you. I think the hearings officer got it right, in part because he simply looked at the approval criteria and read them as they're meant to be read, and he also relied on decisions made by the city planning commission in the past. Mr. Micky's position, if you adopt it, would change how you have applied these rules, and I think frankly make it much more difficult for no good reason. That is not the way your rules are written. Goal five exception is not required. As I said earlier, it's only required if we're, if we're putting fill within that 35-foot setback. We're half a mile from the river. We're not within a 35-foot setback, so we don't need to take an exception to goal 15. City attorney didn't advise the hearings officer that one was required. Your staff didn't believe that it was required. I've already talked about goal five and transplan. The zone issue, I agree with Gabe that rightaway is not zoned. I don't agree that the section that we cited is relevant only to those instances where you have a dispute about where zoning ends and begins. The retaining wall criterion applies to, quote, "visual access to and from the river." Hearing's officer at pages eight and nine of his decision correctly determined this was not the river, but he went beyond that and did more analysis, so I think you can rely on his opinion on that point. 9.885 sub two, that refers to public access, again, quote, "along the river." We're not along the river. And that's why I said at the outset tonight, you have to look carefully at your language. Some of, some of the policies apply to along the river, some apply to everything within the boundary, but when, when your policy talks along, about along the river, doesn't apply to this site. Mr. Micky raised policy D. point five, pages five and six of the hearings officer's decision explains why these improvements are compatible. It simply doesn't, defies common sense to suggest that when one looks at compatibility, you can ignore what's there. If this were a pristine site, Mr. Micky's argument might have some merit to it, but you're talking about a site in, on rightaway, which already has a significant transportation facility in it and on it. And so you take that into account when you make that compatibility analysis under D. five. I think that makes sense. Otherwise, you would have an impossible standard to meet. The Wilkins area plan standards two, four, and seven. Two is again, along the river. It doesn't apply to this site. Four talks about an opaque wall in excess of 75 feet, uses the phrase, viewed from the river. It's not a mandatory approval criteria, but it's not along the river in the sense that you can view it from the river. It's not this area. I've already talked about the geotechnical study, and I appreciate Don answering Commissioner, is it Warren's?
Warren's.
Thank you. Question about the boreholes, but I would encourage you to look at the geotechnical study. I think it's substantial evidence that we satisfied the approval criteria. Chair Byerly, that's all I have tonight. We will, we appreciate the questions you've asked, and we'll provide answers based on the record to some of those. Hopefully, they'll be helpful to you. So we appreciate your time tonight. We hope when you deliberate, you'll come to the same conclusion that the hearings officer did, that this application should be approved, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
And with that, I'll close the public hearing. There's additional...
Oh, yes, we, we're going to talk about record extensions.
Do we do that after the hearing's closed, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Close the public hearing now. Okay, let's talk about the record then.
Yes, I think Mr. Robinson proposed a seven day for the applicant only, and in, I guess there's several options. This is, since it's not an evidentiary hearing, we're not required to leave the record open, or you're not required to leave it open, but can, and you can also determine how you want to do that, as far as if it's for the applicant only, or also additional time for others. We'd have to then, just ensure we're fine with 120-day clock, as far as that goes, so.
Randy?
Yeah. But based on the, on the letter that the appellant submitted tonight, I think we need to give the applicant the seven days requested to respond to this, and then I think there was a seven-day consideration period tacked on after that. So I would move that we hold the written record open for the applicant only for seven days, and then a seven-day review period for our purposes.
All right. Oh, just to clarify, what do you mean by the seven-day review period?
Well, how much time would we have then to, or, yeah, maybe it needs to be longer than that?
Well, as I understand it, the 120 days would be up May 25th, and applicant, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I understand. Question, Chair Byerly? Does that, that includes the full 60? Sorry.
We just want to get it right, so.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Mike Robinson, again, we, for final written argument, we extended the record by seven days. Does that period, Gabe, include that additional seven days?
That's what I'm trying to clarify is...
Okay. Why don't you, let me offer this. Why don't you tell us when you want to come, you're going to, your motion is to allow us final written argument until April 12th. You need to deliberate. You tell us when you're going to deliberate, we'll extend the record, or, not the record, we'll extend the, the clock for that period of time.
Excuse me, for the 120-day period.
We'll make sure you have enough time to deliberate, and then enough time for, for the city to render a decision.
And Mr. Robinson, do you already consider, I just wanted to clarify that we have the same, currently have the same 120?
I think that's right. Yeah, I think that's right.
I think there's already some...
But if you need additional time, the applicant will extend it. It sounds like you're going to give us seven days, so we'll give you seven days anyway, and if you need more time, we'll give that to you.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you.
What's our current schedule for deliberation? It's like, it's like the next available is in May 9th, given that, and I guess that would be, if there's going to, depending on if there's one or two deliberations on this.
Because our next, our next schedule would be the 25th, which is too, too close probably, given the...
So if we did schedule, I'm sorry.
Two weeks from yesterday.
Well, it depends really what you do. I think, let's talk about that first, to make sure we're all on the same page, because I was a little unclear on what you're putting on the table as well. Just to be clear, you have the discretion to do with the record what you feel comfortable with here. You're not obligated to, to keep it open for anyone, so just for clear, and there, and there may be a difference of opinion about that.
There is. We get final written argument at our request unless we waive it.
And we've talked to the city attorney about this particular issue as well, and it's her opinion that at, at, on the record hearing, you're not obligated to, to keep the record open if that, if that's what you so choose. Okay, so that's, that's one point, and we understand there's a difference of opinion about that. If you do choose to open it up, then you also have the latitude to determine how you want to do that. And out of practice, just so we'll put on the table, out of practice, we typically allow both sides to have an opportunity to provide additional argument in this case. That's up to you, though, to decide whether you want to do that or not. That's not what the applicant is suggesting, so.
And I would only point out in, in that, that the opponent did not make a specific request tonight, which I just wanted to point out.
But the question becomes this 120-day period, or how close are we to that? Do we need, if we're holding the record open for seven days, do we need to tack seven days on to the end of what would have been the 120-day period? What's our timing on that?
It seems to me that we're in actually pretty good shape here regardless, especially for allowing a fairly limited record extension here.
Well, that, and with the applicant's offer that at least seven days will be extended.
Right now, we're looking at May 25th at the 120-day...
Right. So that would give us the opportunity to meet on the 9th, and, and perhaps, if needed, schedule an additional meeting.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, we may even be able to do it earlier, depending on what you do with the record. If you leave the record open for one week and that's it...
That's it.
Then we actually may have time to make the 25th of April.
You think you might.
Because that'd be two weeks later.
I mean, I've sat through enough of these that, that I think we need to schedule at least two planning commission meetings for deliberation. Just know how we kind of dig into things pretty hard sometimes, so I'd like to make sure that if we're going to do it, we've got enough stuff to work on now that the amount of information we would get from the applicant is going to be probably more clarified information, which is not going to keep me from not reading all the rest of this during that time period. I think I appreciate the applicant's willingness to give us, if I understood it again, an additional seven days on the back end of our 120-day clock, which would give us something like whatever that is, June 2nd, or whatever the date is there, to make sure that that's correct, and I would ask that you verify that with the applicant.
correct, and I would ask that you verify that with the applicant, to make sure that we all agree on dates.
Right. So if there's consensus that it's a one-week extension of the record, then I would suggest in regard to that, that we look at the 25th for the next, the first deliberations, and we basically hold the 9th, if necessary, for that as well.
Okay. And then that would also give us May 23rd.
If need be.
If need be. So, I don't know that we need to go seven extra days.
I'm confident that two full meetings would do it, but if we needed to do that. If you need to extend the record longer than that, and we can't make the 25th, then it gets a little closer.
Can we do it later? Not extend the record, but extend the timeframe?
Which timeframe?
Well, if we get into the deliberations, find that we're not able to come to that conclusion, can we then extend the seven days to the 120?
We could ask the applicant at that point.
Right. I mean, that's possible. I mean, I guess the question would be, do you feel like you'll be ready to start those deliberations on the 25th, two weeks after the time you receive that information?
Yeah, yes.
And if the answer is yes, then I say, well, let's go for that and get as far as we can.
Since there was no second to my motion, I will withdraw that motion and simply move that we hold the written record open for the applicant only for seven days.
For written information.
For written information.
To be, to be clear, for final written argument?
Right.
Yes.
Applicant only.
Right.
I'll second that. With a friendly amendment, that the applicant agrees to the additional seven-day extension on 120-day time clock.
If we need it.
If we need it. You have to agree to my friendly.
I'll agree.
Okay.
Kind of my original motion.
Any other discussion? I see you had your hand up earlier.
Okay. I lost it.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Does it favor?
Hi.
Does it post?
Thank you.
Okay.
So, if I can, just to clarify too, then, we will meet then Monday, April 25th at 11:30, and that will be probably here, I'm assuming, in the McNutt Room.
And you will confirm that with us?
Yes, but just for folks in the audience, I wanted them to know.
Put like a little blinky on the email. Okay. Well, if there are no further questions, we have everything.
I have a question. I asked Gabe earlier if we could get some PDFs of some of the charts, because some of the stuff I got in records was simply, I'm going to guess a scanned copy, and when I enlarged them, I couldn't read them.
If you can be specific about what is in the record that you'd like a bigger copy of, we can do that for you for sure.
If you can see the, like, sheet number...
Give us some reference, and then we...
I would do that. So, do we have PDFs of those already?
They'd be on disk.
Yeah, they're on the disk. If the one on the disk isn't very good, we have...
When I enlarged the disk, it fuzzed out. It looks like there were scanned copies of courses.
They're mostly scanned copies. In some cases, though, we can go back and scan at higher resolution, or we have the original...
Like I said, I tried to look at, tried to look at measurements and look at sizes, and as soon as I did that, it all just fuzzed out on me.
Okay.
I think they tried to, because of the size, that they tried to do pretty small or low resolutions, that might be why, so we can, we can do higher resolution on them.
Thanks.
In that case, if you can do that, I would ask for two. One is the GP2 map.
Okay.
The other one is the GP4 map.
GP2 and GP4.
Four.
Those are probably my two also, yes.
One's the delineation, and one's the delineation with the roadway influence.
And I have a couple of road elevations I want, but I'll get those for you.
Okay, and we'll make sure that the whole group gets it.
We'll mail the other ones in, and we can make sure that we get a clean copy for you.
Great.
And also, as you run into things, I found the Delta Ponds decision, but if there's ones you run into that, or some...
Questions about what's in there.
Yeah, I can, I know it all too well.
Well, why you got Delta Ponds, once you give me the page number?
It was page 438.
430?
438.
Any other confessions? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.